Heavenly Father, we thank you and we praise you for this wonderful time you've given us together. Lord, for this mighty nation that you've provided for us, I thank you and I praise you for that. Heavenly Father, for the men and women that have served, that are serving us now, Lord, I thank you and I praise you for that. Heavenly Father, they're allowing and providing the freedoms that we have together like this to allow our city leaders to come together and freely conduct business and allow things for each and every one of our benefits. Lord, I thank you and I praise you for that. Heavenly Father, I just lift up each and every one of our nation's leaders, each and every one of those that are in authority, those that are looking after us. Heavenly Father, as you lead and guide and direct, we thank you and we praise you for that. Lord, I thank you for this council here this evening. Heavenly Father, as you just minister to each and every one of them, watch over them, and give them the freedoms that you've placed before them, Heavenly Father, to allow things to come together, to just allow the city works and the things around about us to operate in the way that you've designed. Lord, I thank you for each and every one of the men and women that have served us, that have represented here today in their families. We thank you and we praise you for the service that they provided for this great nation. Lord, for the law officials that are here around us, Lord, I thank you for their service that they give to us each and every day. Heavenly Father, just bless these proceedings. We thank you and we praise you for it in the sweet name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you. To make the record show that we have a quorum tonight, and we'd like to call a meeting to order. At this time, Kenneth Henry is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. It is at this time in our meeting each month that we allow time to welcome our visitors and receive public comment. We would like to welcome you all here tonight. We're glad that the veterans and their families are here with us, and we appreciate you taking the time to be here and attend us. We'd like to thank the staff for being here. We're glad that Gil is here, Larry Thornton. We'd like to thank the Youth Advisory Council for being here. And this is probably one of the largest meetings we have each year, and we are just thrilled to be able to have roomful folks. So if there's anyone that would like to make public comment at this time, then the floor is open.
Mayor, I'd like to thank the city and the council members for taking this time each and every year to recognize the veterans and do that. I count that as a very high honor. And I just appreciate the city and y'all doing that for us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You understand it's one of the pleasures that we get each year is to take time to recognize you. Is there anyone else? If not, I would like to share some words with you that the councilwoman and staff hold dear to their hearts. This evening, we come together to honor our servicemen and women and to remember their sacrifices and the courage it takes to defend honor, duty, and our country. Today, we honor our heroes, remembering their achievements, their courage, and their dedication. We want to thank you for joining us. Today, we stand in the midst of patriots who have nobly served our country. These servicemen share several fundamental qualities. They possess courage, pride, determination, selflessness, dedication to duty, and integrity, all qualities needed to serve a cause larger than themselves. These were ordinary people who responded in extraordinary ways in extreme times. They answered the call to protect their nation, which has given all of us so much. Many are still answering that call today. Many men and women are following in your footsteps, stepping forward to possibly make the ultimate sacrifice. Many troops have fought and died on battlefields to defend our freedom and our way of life. And we, as Americans, are thankful for that. This week, we honor our veterans. And while our feelings are sincere, it is important for us to remember that veterans are defending us 365 days a year. That heroism has been demonstrated time and again by veterans from the American Revolution to the global war on terrorism. And sometimes, it goes unnoticed by those of us who enjoy the security that their sacrifice has provided. Our debt to these heroes can never be repaid, but our gratitude and respect must last forever. It has been often said that without our veterans, Americans would be speaking Russian, or German, or even perhaps Japanese. We do know that without our veterans, America would not be America. Historians have said that Dwight the Eisenhower was prouder of being a soldier than he was of being the president. And while relatively few veterans ever reached the rank of general, pride in one's military service is a bond shared by all who have served. That pride is displayed this evening in the council chambers of Yost Texas. At this time, we would like for the veterans to each stand and introduce themselves and tell us the area of service that they participated in. So we'll just start right here on the front row.
I served in the United States Marine Corps, 3rd Marine Air Wing, HMO 267, from October of '75 to September of '81.
Steve Clinton, I served in the US Navy from 1983 until 1992 in two helicopter squadrons in San Diego, California.
Kenneth Henry, I got volunteered into the Army by being drafted. I served in Korea in the 50s, 60s.
60s.
It was over.
I didn't think he was that old.
I'm Danny Cage, and I served in the Army, or helicopter, from '61 to '63.
I'm Robert Hearn, and I was in the service. Spent most of my time at Air Force Texas.
I'm Robert Hearn, and I was in the service. Spent most of my time at Air Force Texas.
My name is Jose Mblis. I served 19 months. And I spent one year here in training in the States, and then went to Vietnam, spent there about nine months. And I was mine. I worked with helicopters, ferrying troops, supplies and whatever. I was with 269 Combat Aviation Battalion on a COO chief.
Lonnie Adrian, I was in the Navy. Served two tours in Vietnam on an aircraft carrier, flew part of helicopter crew. I was in from '69 to '73.
My name is Jack Reynolds. I served in the Air Force from 1955 through '58. And I was an ordinance. And here, went overseas to Alaska. I was in between wars, hot wars. I was in the cold war though, in Alaska.
I'm Charles Sprecher. I served in the National Guard from '57 to '83.
I'm George Compton. I served in the Air Force from 1962 to '82, retired. I flew the C-141s during the Vietnam War campaign.
My name is Dale Burton. I served 1948, 1952 in York, New Jersey, in the Armored Division.
Melvin Griffin, I served US Navy from 1946 to 1947 in a separation division at Norfolk, Virginia.
My name is Eddie Alvarado. I served in the US Marine Corps from 1983 to 2007. I was in the motor transport, the maintenance chief.
Chief Ross.
I'm Roy Rice, and I served in the Air Force from 1975 to '77, security specialist and instructor in Albuquerque, New Mexico.
Yes, at this time, if you will allow us, we would like to come down and shake everybody's hand if you allow us to take time to do that. Veterans have given us freedom, and you've given us security, and you have given us the greatest nation on earth. It is impossible to put a price on your service. This evening, we want to thank you again for being here. It is our pleasure to honor you, and we want to really thank you for your service. Thank you. We're going to continue on with our agenda. You are all welcome to stay as long as you would like. And if there's something you need to do, you're welcome to leave. It's your choice. But we want to thank you again for being here. We, at this time, want to turn the floor over to Ramon, and I think he has a special presentation.
It's Casey.
Just on behalf of the city mansion, we'd like to present to you Casey Coker on receiving a Top Gun Award from High Grant of Texas, ADC. Casey?
Thank you.
Thank you, Casey. We're glad that somebody else recognizes your dedicated work in what you do for the city.
Well, thank you. It's very nice to work here with everybody in Mule Shoe.
The next thing we'd like to do on our agenda is to have a public hearing in regard to the CDEDG grant. And this is an opportunity for the public to be informed about the grant program and to submit comments on projects that may be funded by that program. David, I want to turn that over to you and let you explain.
Thanks. I'm going to talk a little bit about the program. But first, all of y'all who couldn't see Casey's face, you didn't see her say, and Ramon said, "You took that off my wall."
Not everybody saw it hanging.
No, I had to put it back for you.
The first welcome to the public hearing for the Texas Community Development Block Grant Program. This is a program that is designed to assist low to moderate income families with basic living needs, particularly water, and sewer, and streets, drainage, and those kind of things. The purpose of the public hearing tonight is to talk a little bit about the program. If you have any questions, you can see me now or later. And also, to get any input from citizens about projects that the city could apply for, for these funds. These are federal funds that come through the state. They're available, like I said, for water, for sewer, for streets, for actually gas systems, and a number of other things that could improve quality of life in areas that have low to moderate income folks. The city has used these grants in the past to fund water and sewer projects, and also to fund street paving projects. The maximum amount of the grant is $275,000, which the city would need to match with $55,000 to receive the maximum points. These applications are scored both at the regional level and at the state level. Funds cannot be used for construction of public buildings. We can't build a city hall with it. We can't use it for new housing unless the project required a house to be moved. We can't use them for political activities. We can't buy construction equipment with it. And we can't do operation and maintenance with it. So that's a real quick overview of the grant. If anybody has any questions, like I said, I'd be glad to answer them now. If you have questions later, I'd be glad to visit with you. Also, if you have any projects that you have in mind, what the city staff is thinking now, and council will consider this at the December meeting, we're probably looking at staff recommending that the council, that the city apply for a water project to replace some two-inch mains. I kind of hate to call a two-inch line a main line, but we have some areas in town that have, the main line is a two-inch line. And replace those with six-inch lines to provide better pressure, better volume, and also better fire protection. The council will look at a resolution at the December meeting and make that decision. But now's the time, if anybody has any input, anytime between now and then, you can voice it now or come see me later. That's what I've got now.
Is there anyone that would like to make any comment, ask any more questions?
Oh, actually, you know, Ramon to help me again. We have a community needs assessment that we would like to give you the opportunity to fill this out, and we'll get it passed out. It's just for you here at the public hearing to mark which projects you think should be a priority in Mule Shoe. If you could take the time to fill those out, I'd greatly appreciate it. Not only is it an opportunity for you to participate in the application process, it also enhances the application by having these filled out.
I'm going to go when I gave you a way out. There would be a test. Have they had any questions or any comment during our hearing? If not, then we will close the hearing, and we will move on with our agenda. Whenever you have time to fill these out, then you can turn them in to David or the man, or give them to someone.
Leave them in your seat, and we'll pick them up.
Yeah, that'll be fine. Appreciate it. The next thing we'd like to do on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of last month's meeting, which was held October the 13th. I trust that you all reviewed those minutes, and I'll make the motion that we approve those.
Second.
And we have a second. Is there any discussion? Now, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. The next thing we would like to do is to consider appointments to the Mule Shoe Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors. And Casey, would you like to put some comments about this out?
Sure. So as of October 31st, we had two terms expiring. That was Dustin Clevenger, who served as our president, and Jose Sanchez as vice president. Dustin has agreed to continue serving if the council approves. And we have also put up for recommendation Mr. Colt Ellis. And we think he'd be a good fit for the Economic Development Corporation, and we think he'll have some good ideas, and also be able to communicate a little with the council. So those are our recommendations, our Dustin Clevenger and Colt Ellis.
I'll make the motion to accept the two recommendations from the ADC.
One second.
We have a motion and a second to accept those two appointments, those recommendations from the ADC. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you, sir. And would you pass on to Dustin that we appreciate his return to the role?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I say something here real quick? I was coming in from Lubbock today, and I heard on the radio that to turn the outside lights on at dark tonight, and leave them on tonight, tomorrow, and then turn them off the morning of the 12th. I don't know, they said to commemorate a better day. That's the first I heard of it, and I heard it on the radio, and I thought, well, that's something to think about, you know?
Yes, thank you.
All right. I did not remember it.
Well, I heard that earlier this morning on the radio.
Really?
On the porch light, right?
Yeah, porch light, yeah.
Okay, thank you so much.
And leave it on 24 hours, right?
Yeah. Yeah, the morning of the 12th, just turn it off.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lee. The next thing we would like to do on our agenda is to discuss the Home Will Charter Amendment process. Now, the charter that we have for the State of Mule Shoe was created in 1960. And after about 50 years, from time to time, it comes things that are outdated, or at times, state law overrides the things that are set forth in our charter. So the council and the staff has taken on the challenge to possibly make some changes in the charter. And so we're going to turn the floor over to our attorney, Slater Elza, and he's going to explain to us the process required to amend the charter.
Okay, you know, this is something that we've talked about for several years, that we knew it was coming. And y'all's 1960 charter is actually one of the newer ones around. Some go way back. But as the mayor said, really, the goal is to get updated, consistent, and what we learn is that as time goes by, just like any businesses that y'all own or work for, things change. We do things differently. And then when we go back and we look at our charter, we realize that times have changed. And so our firm just got done doing a charter amendment in a town down south of Lubbock. And what we've learned is they're not as intimidating as everybody's always thought they were. And so kind of the process that I would envision your city using is to go ahead and get copies of the charter in the city council's hands where they think it's been done, even some with some notes that David and I made a year or two ago, and tell you that everything's on the table. And eventually, you know, we'll go from there, and later this month, or early next month, probably need to have a good sit-down work session, and see how far, if we can get all the way through. If we need to break it up, we can break it up. I made a mistake in Snyder. I split it right down the middle, and we had a five-hour meeting. And then for the second half, we had about a 15-minute meeting. So separating it by pages isn't the smart way to do it, I learned. But to give y'all time to look at some things, to ask questions. One of the things that you learn in this process is you might not understand why something is the way it is, but after we look into it for you, it makes a lot of sense, or it doesn't make a lot of sense. I know that there were things that we looked at with the city manager in the last one we did, and we went to the staff, especially on financial issues, and we said, "Look at all these things we need to change." And they said, "If you change it, we'll kill you. This works perfect." And so we'll learn a lot going through this. And we'll have that workshop, and then we will put together, really what it is, is just a list of the changes that y'all think are important and that y'all want. And then I think we need to have at least one public hearing. Y'all might decide you want more than one public hearing, to get some input on these issues and to find out what's important to people. And then ultimately, from there, you'll call an election, and we'll look to coincide with the municipal elections in May, I think is what we're shooting for. And that way, I mean, it's an important election in the city. Hopefully, we'll have good turnout anyway, and you're not having to have a second one. But then the voters will vote. Before that election comes up, every citizen will get a copy of the proposed changes by mail and have a chance to look over them. And you can have as many or as few as you want, and this is not a thumbs up or a thumbs down deal. The most they've ever had is one city did 82 amendments to their charter, and the citizens vote on each one of them. I mean, it's not where you can just say, "Approve, you know, these are the 20 changes we proposed, yes or no."
So each change, like, it's by article?
Right.
So if something's changing, or even a section, so if anything's changed, then the voter gets to decide on each single item?
Yes. The only place that we do that differently is we've become big believers in really cleaning this up, because if you see a section that says, "The city of Mule Shoe is going to do this process," whatever it is, "in accordance with Texas Property Code," and then it gives a section, and a subsection, and a sub-subsection, well, that hadn't been the section in 30 years, maybe 40 years. So we will do a global change on a lot of that that says, you know, "In these areas, we will just follow current state law, so that as that law changes, y'all will always be current and not have a bunch of out-of-date sections." Because 20 years ago, the state of Texas had all the laws here, and then they broke it out and put it into 25 different books. And so a lot of your numbers are wrong. A lot of everybody's numbers are wrong. But the idea is that it's a public process. The workshops will be open meetings. The public hearings will be in public. The call to the election, the approval of the ballot, and then ultimately, it becomes the citizens and not y'all who decide what they want to do. And the other thing that I can tell you is that you'll look through here and decide there's 100 things you want to change. And then when you really narrow it down, you know, my guess is you'll find 12 to 18, you know, topics that do make a difference and will be good. Are you making fun of me?
No. No.
Yep?
He's saying a number.
I'm just telling you.
Yeah?
But that's kind of how the process works. But it is unusual that you'll have a vote on each and every one of those items.
I'll just tell them 10 is my go.
10 is my go.
Well, if you have 12 or 18, that's better than 10, so we're doing good.
So the packet that we received, because I kind of reviewed some of it, then you've already made some notes and everything, so...
Several years ago, when we first talked about this, I had, who at the time was a young lawyer that did no city work, Audie Scavetta, who y'all now know does a lot of city work with us. And so for his Christmas project, I said, "Why don't you go through here and figure out what parts are the law, and what parts contradict the law, and what parts are obsolete, what parts are not good?" Y'all have some stuff in here that contradicts itself within the same document. And so he went through, and he's a real detail guy. And so he came up with some of that, and I think David came up with some of that. We can't remember.
That's kind of a combination. That's about three years ago.
And so what we've decided, if anything's wrong, or you don't like it in there, Audie did it.
We have a name.
Since he's not here, we're blaming on him.
We have a name. So then we have a workshop.
But you can tell it wasn't just an over-not thought. It's been talking for a while.
Well, and really, what happened, I mean, when you go to these TML meetings, and you talk to other cities, somebody says, "Boy, our charter's a mess, and we need to do a charter election." People about pass out. And I mean, for years, it's just been, "We're not going to do that." And there are some people down in Austin who, you know, kind of kept that idea going, that they're the only ones smart enough to do it. And then we saw the city of Amarillo really put together a good, simplified, common-sense approach, and it worked really well. And we've taken that, and it's just, it's nothing to be scared of. And it works really, it works really well. And I think y'all will be happy with the process. I think your citizens will be happy with the process. My recommendation is, will usually be my recommendation is, the more open it is, the better. And so we will try to work in those public meetings, and, you know, hopefully, people come and participate. And it should be a really smooth process, and culminating with a vote in May.
We will, probably, before this month's over, we'll probably have a couple of workshops, or at least one, where the council and staff will sit down and talk about some changes that they feel like are important in the charter. And then, like they said, we'll have a couple of public hearings to where you, as the public, can come in and make suggestions and help us to understand maybe the changes that we should make, so...
We'll have those public hearings after we mail out the...
We'll have those public hearings after we mail out the proposed changes.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? Yes, sir.
And you're reading for this is to not to come up and have all those changes be made it. A law will be made it one time, is that right?
Well, there will be several proposed changes, but if you like six of them, and you don't like four of them, y'all, you can vote to pass six of them, and to leave four of them the way they are now.
Well, the idea of it is to keep from all of it, coming law or something, all at one time, is that right?
Well, it's to keep from putting you in a bad position. You know, because sometimes you'll see, somebody will say, and this happens all the time in Congress or the Texas House, where they say, "We've got this bill, and it's going to cover these things that we desperately need, and we're going to attach a bunch of stuff to it that nobody would ever do." And the way this process was set up is, you can't do that. You can't cram stuff down people's throats, because they want to do what's right here, and so you make them do what they would never do. So it's each item will be subject to a referendum, and it works really well.
So please, I want to encourage everyone to, and tell your neighbors, and tell your friends, and, you know, and if you have questions, to please come and ask. And it'll be a team effort.
You know, some of us have been around long enough that we actually knew the fathers of the city that wrote this charter back in 1960. And so, you know, we have to understand that they had only good intentions when that was done. But for over the years, some things have changed, and sometimes it needs a little work and willhousekeeping to keep it today, so. At this time, we would like to receive a report from the Mule Shoe Youth Advisory Council.
First of all, I would just like to again thank the city council and all of the city for your support that you've shown us, and just thank you again for everything you've done. And the Youth Advisory Council will be having an I Love My City Christmas event on December 16th, from 6 to 8 o'clock at By Pete the Mule. And we will also be having a unique Christmas sweater contest at 7 o'clock, so if you're interested in that, you can come. And then, our brisket fundraiser will be January 25th. And we do our brisket fundraiser to raise money to go to our Yak Summit, which will be in Colleen this year, on January 30th. And that's all I have. Thank you.
And the location of the brisket dinner?
Yes, it will be at the Methodist Church.
And what time will it start?
At noon.
Can you sell by the way?
No, we don't.
Sell tickets, yes, we'll sell tickets. Tickets will be on sale on Tuesdays.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next thing we would like to do is to turn the floor over to David for administrative reports.
Well, and you've already seen earlier this, in this meeting, Casey was recognized as the Top Gun, received the Top Gun Award in the Texas High Ground of Texas. And we're really proud of Casey and what she's done. She does a great job for us. Also, Irene and Leanne and I went, made a quick trip to Austin last week to do a presentation at a TML Human Resources seminar about council-staff relationships. And I think that went real well. Pretty good. That's all I've got, ma'am.
Okay. The council have anything they'd like to add?
Go with you.
That's right.
Yes. We want to congratulate the football team, and we, they have our best wishes for Friday night. We're playing Kermit at Friendship Stadium at what time?
7:00.
7:00. And we'd like for all of you to be there if you can. Once again, we would like to thank the veterans for taking the time to be here with you and your families, and we just love you guys, and we sincerely appreciate everything you've done, so. And if you can hear service at any time, please let us know. Okay? If there's nothing else, then our meeting is adjourned.